This meeting is called to order at 7 o'clock. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very well. Welcome. We will be, we are being broadcast live today on Van Buren Television Channel 12. Clerk Wright, can you get us started and call the roll?
Yes. Clerk Wright is present. Treasury Bud is excused. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee White.
Present.
Supervisor McNair.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First item is executive summary. This is to let people know that aren't in the building, pretty much, what is on the agenda. The first thing would be the consent agenda where we pretty much take care of our housekeeping. We pay our bills, our credit cards. On this one also, though, will be an election inspector pay increase. We're moving it up about $25 or so a day. We're also going to be approving a combination of lots for the Smith Farm. This is another housekeeping item to finalize the sale with Subaru, who's bringing a research, development, a building here, creating a lot of good paying jobs. And we're also going to be doing some housekeeping. We have to yearly reapprove our current fee structure. In addition, we're going to be discussing a memorial in honor of Egypt Covington to be placed at the Quirk Park. Mr. Covington and Mrs. Covington are here today. We're also going to be discussing the new water and sewer rates that are being proposed for next year. And finally, we're going to be discussing the reimbursement, our policy as for the employees for reimbursement of travel, meal, and lodging while they're on, at training. So in light of that, let's continue on. I'll begin with adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to reapprove the agenda as presented.
Support.
Got a motion by trustee Frazier and supported by trustee Miller. Hearing no comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This motion passes. The next is the adoption of the consent agenda. Trustee Martin? Would you like to make the approval, or motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to reapprove the consent agenda with items 1 through 11. One being work-study session minutes of September 4, 2018, closed session minutes of September 4, 2018, board meeting minutes of September 4, 2018, prepaid list of September 6, 2018, prepaid list of September 13, 2018, voucher list of September 18, 2018, approval of the 2019 Board of Trustees meeting schedule. Number eight, approval of resolution, Resolution 2018-18 to increase the hourly attorney fee for the firm of Butzel Long from $300 to a flat rate of $375. Number nine, approval on the election inspector pay increase. Number 10, approval of the combination of lots 83-022-01-003-004.
Yes, through 83.
Through.
83023.
8302399-005-000 with conditions. Number 11, approval of Resolution 2018-24, 2019, departmental fee schedules.
Trustee White, would you like to support or?
Support.
Okay. All right, I have a motion for approval by trustee Martin and supported by trustee White. Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Motion passes. Next item would be public hearing, which we have none. After that, we're now into the correspondence and announcements and presentations. I just want to make comment that Western Wayne, Western Wayne, what is it, Community College District is having Saturday, September 29th, a beer, was it a beer tasting party? It's a beer tasting party from 1:30 to 3:30. They had it last year, and I'm gonna tell you, if you like going to beer tasting parties, they didn't have a lot of people show up, but they probably had 50 different beer vendors show up. So it was a lot of fun. They're going to do it again. They want to build it up. They have an incredible brewery there. They teach people to be brewmasters. You should try Western Wayne County Community College over there on Tyler and Hagerty Road on Saturday, September 29th, from 1 to 5 p.m. Does anybody else have an announcement?
Yes, I, if I may. I want to hear the chair. I want to say that we had a great Van Buren Public Safety Day that took place on Saturday, September 15th. We had a great turnout. Some of the highlights and activities that we highlighted were the crime prevention, police traffic division, the fire safety trailer, 911 dispatch. Let's see, we had an inflatable slide, popcorn machine, snow cones, the whole works. So we, if you missed it this year, please come out and join us next year. This was a great event for our community.
Trustee Frazier, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to comment on Wayne County. It's okay.
Go ahead.
No, it's all right. I mean that the weather was bad that last time.
It was bad last year.
Yeah.
Trustee Martin?
I'd like to add that in this month's Township Focus put out by the Michigan Townships Association, Van Buren Township has been profiled in it for Township of Excellence Award Certificate of Achievement in the Clerk's Office. And the Clerk's Office and Deputy Montgomery and the staff has done an excellent job in making sure that our elections are run smoothly, we get our results in a timely manner, and also taking care of the other business of the Clerk's Office. And I would just like to say, MTA defines a township of excellence as a strong, vibrant community governed by a township board that adheres to best practices to deliver quality programs and services to accomplish community-driven goals. And that's what we are striving to do here in Van Buren Township. So I'd like to thank Clerk Wright and the staff for doing an excellent job.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I would also like to mention that Amy Brow was also highlighted in the MTA magazine as well, as one of the women in Michigan who's a fire chief. So we should bring that.
One of two.
One of two, yes. The other one was Regina, I can't remember her last name, but got the first name.
Can you forward that to me because I've actually asked people around here for it and nobody seems to be able to get it.
Oh, I sent it to Sherri.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I'll send it to her.
Thank you. All right. Okay, any other comments? All right, we're moving on then. Is there any comments from the audience? Nope. All right, next is public comment. This is where we allow public comment on items of business that are happening during the meeting today. Is there any item, anybody from the public that wishes to comment on the items of today? Hearing none, we're gonna move on down to unfinished business, which we have none. We're now at new business. First item is to consider approval of a memorial, a memorial at Quirk Park in honor of Egypt Covington. Can I get a motion for approval?
Sir, through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of a memorial at Quirk Park in honor of Egypt Covington.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and we have approve, we have support. Could, Director, could you come up and talk about this?
Good evening, everyone.
Director Wright, thank you.
Yes. Longtime resident, Mr. Chuck Covington, has approached the Parks and Recreation Department about placing a memorial at Quirk Park in honor of his daughter, Egypt Covington, who passed away June 23rd, 2017. Memorial contributions have been collected that will fund three to five red bud trees, which are native to the area, a bench, and a plaque with an engraved message Egypt created. This is what we would like to put on the plaque that Egypt created. "So grateful for spring. Although nothing is permanent, we still must not forget to have faith that the flowers will bloom again. They always do. A Girl Named Egypt." Mr. Covington has been working with Davy Tree Service. This tree company will plant, fertilize, provide water bags, and maintain the trees. The location of this memorial within Quirk Park has yet to be determined as the park will be going under, I'm sorry, undergoing new developments next spring. So this won't be any cost to the township. And I think Mr. Covington and his wife have a few things they'd like to say.
We'd like to thank the board. We'd like to thank the township. This is where our daughter Egypt grew up, her entire life. And to be able to celebrate her life in such a manner is just phenomenal. It's a blessing that we know that she's looking down upon us right now. One of the things that I've mentioned previously is that when we went out to Quirk Park to take a look at different places to, that we might want to set this up, we had no previous idea of which place it would be, where it would be. I went out with the director and the deputy director, along with the certified arborist from Davy Tree Service. We looked at a bunch of different places. And where we ended up so far, we know that it has to come under the master plan, where we ended up so far was a place that my wife had taken a picture of the girls at, and I don't know if the camera can see it as well. And it just so happened that this is the very same spot that we had chosen that would be acceptable for this memorial for our daughter. So I'd like to thank the trustees. I'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation area for showing us how to move through this. Very seamless, very pleasant, in a sense, bittersweet process. And just for everyone for coming on board with making this thing become a reality for our daughter, who lived here and loved living here. Thank you all.
Thank you. Just stay up there for a moment. To sit, I know that the board is really sympathetic towards this, and the entire community, quite frankly, is very, has reached out to the Covingtons and lost them. She was a light in this community, and it's just amazing, the outpouring of love. And we'd love to do this. I do want to let the public know that we have not picked a place for it. The Covingtons know this. But in Quirk Park, Quirk Park is going through a major renovation over the next eight months or so, 12 months. It's going to have a large splash park in it. It's going to have a changing area in it. It's gonna be, have a redone playscape in it. Paths are gonna be redone. And of course, there's going to be a memorial incorporated into it with a vote of the board. So does anybody have any questions?
I had my question answered yesterday.
We spoke yesterday on this link. Trustee Frazier?
I'd just like to say that I hope that we'll do whatever's possible to facilitate getting the, this project off the drawing board in the planting season, since, you know, by mid-November probably, you could still plant trees, I think they said yesterday. So if we could do that, that would be beneficial, I think, and help. And I think it's a good thing for the community to have, we are going to establish a policy. The Recreation Department is going to be looking at a policy so that other families can join in, but Egypt will be the catalyst to get this started, and it's a great, great honor. I know that, I did some research, and I think it's, Central Park has over 2,500 or something benches that have been donated, and they have 4,000 trees that have been donated in the names of people. And it, I think it brings comfort and peace to the family or kin. And if we can also offer bricks, I think that would be helpful. The schools have done this kind of thing in the past, like at Savage, they have a butterfly garden for a young lady that lost her life. But, you know, I think it's a great start, and it'll be a beautiful addition to the township and to the park system.
Through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
Mr. Covington, can you make note or announce where people can donate towards this memorial?
The website is A Girl Named Egypt. And you go there and there's a spot for donations for the scholarship fund, which we gave away money, of course, to a Belleville High School student last fall. And we've made donations to things that Egypt supports, such as, oh, I'm getting the brain, Safe House in Ann Arbor, a haven for men and women, as well as Dragonfly Rescue, Haven for abused animals, and so forth. So so far this year, we've given away over $11,000 to those charities and the high school. And we could, we could use the donations. Thank you.
Just because, just because I feel like I have to manage expectations, I have to warn you that there's a good chance that this will not happen in the fall, because again, we're reconfiguring Quirk Park, and even though we may know where we want to put it, it's a good, it may be, it may be, it may be in the way of an excavator that's coming through to put it in a splash park. So until we know exactly how we're gonna lay it out, I don't know where it's going, I mean.
The arborist did mention yesterday that we could plant in spring.
Okay, yeah. Okay, all right. Are there any further questions?
I'd just like to say the legacy of Egypt lives on in Van Buren Township, and that's a wonderful thought.
Are there any further questions? Trustee White.
Mr. Covington has served on several commissions and been a very enthusiastic citizen for us, and he recently donated a very nice bus to the Parks and Rec Department. So we are familiar with Chuck Covington, Mr. Covington, and just been an outstanding resident, citizen for Van Buren Township. Thank you, Charles.
Very much, thank you. Hearing no further questions, I have a motion by trustee Miller, and it's been supported by trustee Frazier, to consider approval of a memorial for Egypt Covington at Quirk Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, next item is to consider approval of Resolution 2018-23, 2019. This will be our water and sewer rates and fee schedule for the next year. Can I get a motion for approval?
I make a motion to reapprove the Resolution 2018-23, 2019, water and sewer rates and fee schedule.
Okay, I've got a motion by trustee Frazier and supported by trustee Martin. Director Taylor?
I'm here for any questions, last minute questions.
Could you give us an overview of the, of the, let's go to, let's go to the heart of the matter. Current, I'd like to know, first of all, why the 5% increase? I assume it's because of an increase from these, city Detroit.
Yeah, our water and sewer agencies that, first off, we purchase water from the Great Lakes Water Authority. There's an increase that we're receiving from them this coming year, as well as increases from all our sanitary services, the four of them, we're all receiving increases as well. That's, that's a big part of the, the increase. The others are just the normal operational increases that we have in the course of just running a business. And, and so that's what we're, we're asking this 5% rate increase for.
Could you give us an example of percent increases from the five different municipalities, five different authorities you just mentioned?
Well, for the water and, for the water rates, roughly, we're looking at almost a 10% rate increase from, from Great Lakes. Let me see, for DUO, we're looking at estimated about a 4.5%. We're looking at about a 4.5 to 5, 4.5% from Shuva, 5% from the Rouge Valley, and a 5% from Yucca. So those are all the percentages that we're receiving increases.
Does anybody have any questions?
No. Through the chair.
Trustee Frazier.
I'd just like to say, I commend Director Taylor on guiding us through. Even though we had to raise our rates last year 5%, and we have to do it this year, it's out of our control because we are part of the Great Lakes Water Authority, which Wayne County, Macomb County, and, what?
We have Macomb, Oakland.
Oakland.
Yeah, Washington, Almenrol.
And there's 127, I think, communities.
Yes.
That receive service from the Great Lakes Water Authority.
Right.
And before, when we got our water from Detroit, it, we had junk bond ratings, and since we formed and bought out that, bought out the Detroit water system, the Great Lakes Water Authority has now an A-plus bond rating, which is improved greatly. And we have a voice at the table on where our money is spent and how increases go, because we have someone on the board representing us, which is a big improvement, because when we were with Detroit, there was no voice at the table from Wayne County or from other communities. So I appreciate that. And, you know, I just think we're moving in the, in the right direction, and it's unfortunate, but we have reserves in our water funds, and we don't have to charge 10% as we're being charged. We only have to pass on 5% because of good management on, on our part.
Through the chair.
Trustee Miller. The average rate increase, just so you know, it's gonna be about $2.75 per month for the average customer. That's the typical customer. That's about how much it adds up to.
That's good to know.
It should also be noted that we still have the lowest rates in Wayne County.
Yes.
Again, say it again.
Say it again!
We have the lowest rates in Wayne County.
Still.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Good job, Director Taylor. Thank you. All right, I have a motion by trustee Frazier and it's been supported by trustee Martin to establish the new water and sewer rates for 2019 and the fee schedule. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is to consider approval of Resolution 2018-22, which is the reimbursement of travel, meal, and lodging expenses policy. Can I get a motion?
Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of Resolution 2018-22, reimbursement of travel, meal, and lodging expenses policy.
Clerk, all right, trustee, I've got a motion for approval by trustee Miller and supported by clerk Wright. And I guess, since Treasurer Bud's not here, I'll take it over. The reimbursement of the travel, meal, and lodging is basically, the biggest thing here is that we now have a, have a chart on whether you fly or you drive, and you have to choose the more, whichever is more economical. We now also have a meal reimbursement policy, which is based on the federal guidelines, which limit employees to $59 a day. And now, if they're already getting meals included, that's a mute point, that doesn't count. It lays out Michigan case law, which states exactly what is an allowable reimbursement. Spouses, beverages, excuse me, not beverages, but alcohol, tobacco, those are not allowable expenses. Any money that is advanced, if money is advanced to person, because sometimes we send people that are union, that don't make a lot, out of town, when they get back, they have five days to return in a receipt. Five days, no more 30, 60 days. Five days, or they begin starting to lose their ability to collect. The rest is basically what we've always done, just spelled out a little bit better in this policy. Does anybody have any questions?
Through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
I have some comments. First of all, we have been crying for this travel policy for over, what, two years now? So I'm glad that you heard what we had to say, you implemented our concerns into this new policy. So thank you for everyone for working on this and bringing it forward. It's much needed.
Clerk Wright?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Director Sumter for listening to all the trustees and bringing forth what everyone has said in the work-study and implemented into the policy. That's what, that's what it's all about. Hearing feedback and putting something together that suits everyone's need. So good job.
Thank you.
Does anybody else? Trustee White.
Thank you, Supervisor. As most everyone knows, this has been a pet peeve of mine for the past two years. I pushed and pushed and pushed for this, and I'm very pleased to see that finally, after all the discussions that we've had, that we've come to a decision to do something that is in good shape, and our residents can look at it and know and understand what's going on, and understand it. So I'm pleased that we've got this reimbursement of the travel, meal, and lodging expenses policy spelled out in there, and it should benefit us, the trustees, the, all the employees, and our residents also.
I have a motion. It's been, trustee Frazier, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, thank you for listening to our concerns, and the Director of Human Resources did a good job of putting a limit on the food and the air, travel, and standard rooms, and spelling out everything. I think that Treasurer Bud's suggestion that we separate out travel, meal, and lodging expenses made it a lot clearer for us, so we have it denoted. You get a standardized room. If you want something extra, you have to pay for it upfront. So I think the questions that we had before will be answered by this new policy, and I appreciate everyone's work on it.
Trustee Martin.
There was, there was never an abuse of the, the previous policy. This is just a housekeeping item that, gonna spell everything out and make everything clear. But I just, I want to say again, there was no abuse of the policy. We didn't have any problems, but it's just a clearer and more concise policy that we can all live with.
Hold on a second. I guess, yeah, we're in round two. Go ahead, you have one more shot.
So I would just like to say that I disagree vehemently with trustee Martin's assessment that we did not have abuse of our policy in the past. There was some abuse, and now it's been corrected, and we're moving forward, and I think that's good. But to say that there was no abuse, I think, is misleading the public. But thank you for your comment.
Through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
I also want to say, I don't think this was a housekeeping item, where every year we were approving this, I think it needed to be revised, revamped. We had concerns and questions and additions that we wanted to add to this, and it took a while to get it here. So I think it goes beyond housekeeping. But again, I want to thank this board, and I want to thank Nicole Sumter for working so hard and diligently, and hearing all our concerns and implementing these changes. This is one of the things that really was, you know, it just rubbed everyone the wrong way. This holds everyone accountable, and it's, it's transparent. So it can't be questioned.
Thank you. Okay, one more time? Okay, we have a motion for approval by trustee Miller. We have support by trustee Wright. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. Next item. Next item is the reports, which is the July 2018 budgetary report. We've received it. Next item is public comment for non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak on anything that they so desire from the public? Oh, okay. Next item is board comments for non-agenda items. Does anybody from the board wish to speak?
Through the chair.
Trustee Frazier.
I have a couple announcements. Since we talked about the water rates going up, I wanted to bring to the community's attention that the Great Lakes Water Authority and the Michigan Department Environmental Quality will be holding a lead and copper workshop. There's new rules that the federal government has put in place, and it will, the closest place for us to attend is at the Stone Creek Banquet Hall in Flat Rock. And unfortunately, it has to be in the afternoon from 1 to 3:30. There is another one being held in Troy, but it also is in the afternoon. So I'd just like to say that the Great Lakes Water Authority is looking out for the quality of the water that we are receiving. And we don't want to have trouble with our water system like Flint or Detroit, and we are being proactive and informing residents and citizens about what they're doing. And I appreciate that. And I have one other announcement. We are, the League of Women Voters, which is not for women only.
I'll remember.
We encourage male participation also, will be holding a program, and it's called Spotlight on New Voters. It will be September 25th at Owen Intermediate School at 7 o'clock. And we will give a brief history of voting in America and voting rights, and we will also give certificates to new voters. And we will also give certificates to new voters, or first-time voters. And we hope that it will make a big deal and big impression on first-time voters, so that they will take into consideration how important it is for every American and every citizen to get out there and vote. There's never been a more important time, I don't think, in the history, in our history, than to vote this next election. So we're trying to get the, get spotlight on new voters and encourage, we will be doing voter registration drives at Wayne County Community College, Oakland Community College, Schoolcraft, around the area, and be working with different groups. And Belleville has a strong chapter of the League of Women Voters, thanks to our community activist Barbara Miller for starting up our chapter. And we are aligned with the Plymouth Livonia Group, and so we make a bigger organization, and we have strength in numbers. And I appreciate the efforts on League of Women Voters.
Trustee Miller?
Just to fun fact on the water, you can now get testing kits at JCPenney at the checkout.
Really?
Some today, anyway.
All right, that's good to know.
Trustee White?
As the board liaison to the Environmental Commission,
Thank you.
I would, I would like to remind all of our residents to be very cautious about their contact with the water in Belleville Lake. And this is not only Belleville Lake, it comes from very far north, all the way down through the Huron River system. Don't let your pets go in the water. If your pet gets in the water, drag them out by the hair of the head, take them and wash them real good, and rinse them down real good. Do not eat the fish from Belleville Lake. The Belleville, the Van Buren Township Park on the West South Service Drive is open, but there is no swimming allowed. The beach is closed there. You can still safely boat in the lake, but be very cautious about coming in contact with the water, and especially with any green water or green weeds that could represent a huge portion of the P E A Cs, I think is what it is, or P E A S. Don't ask me, I, I know what it's for, but if I told you, we wouldn't understand unless we're sinistere waters specialists. So just, just be cautious and be aware of coming into contact or anything in Belleville Lake. Like I said, boating is still okay. Swim at your own risk, as bad as that sounds, but you shouldn't come in contact with any water if you can at all prevent it. I'd also like to remind our lakeside residents that there is an ordinance, a resolution, for as it is a requirement, to have your address, your street address, on the lakefront of your property, on, on your boat dock, on your boathouse, or any other approximate area. As most of you know, we have a boat patrol in the lake on most weekends, and if there's a situation, then that could be an extra person, because he is a member of the Police Department and the Fire Department, as, or one fellow is, I know. And when I went out on the lake in the boat with him, he, it showed me how important that was, because that he can respond and be added help to the Police Department or the Van Buren Township Fire Department in case of an emergency. And the few dollars it would cost you to put a plaque on your boat dock, on your boathouse, or just on a post in, on your lakeside property is to your benefit, basically, but it also helps our officers on the water. So please, try to get that done sometime this fall. It is a township regulation. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. I am going to finish up by discussing, really quickly, the toxic algae bloom that is currently in the Belleville Lake. This is highly unusual. A lot of these chemicals have originated up in Fenton, so a lot of these PFas things that he's talking, that Trustee White was talking about, have come down through the waterways, and they've basically made, do not eat the fish, throughout the entire waterway from Fenton all the way down through Howell and Brighton, Ann Arbor, of course, us, all the way out to Lake Erie. But we currently have ideal conditions, unfortunately, for an algae bloom. And this algae bloom was tested, and it was, it's not good. It's, it's not good to the point that I have to say, stay out of the water. You can boat all you want, you can do all those other things, but just stay out of the water, at least the green part of it, for a week or so until it dies off. I've had a lot of questions, because I understand that really, really smells bad. I've contacted D and R T E Q. We cannot treat this. There is no treatment out there for it. We are just going to have to live through it dying. And unfortunately, as it dies, it becomes slightly, it still remains its toxicity, because as it dies, it actually releases it, toxicity, until it changes over. Luckily, we have a very fast-moving current, and it will clear out quickly once it does. But for right now, please take this one seriously. I, I don't want to, don't want to alarm people, but we really should stay out of this water at this time. Trustee Frazier?
Just, you know, there were, when I went, went across the bridge on Saturday, I think, there were, and on Sunday, there were a lot of boats out there. So Belleville Lake is still be, popular and being used, but I think people really need to be cautious. And we do have signs up, don't we?
We have signs up.
And it's on our website?
It's on our website.
And, you know...
We put it on social media.
Yeah, and I think it's good that you're mentioning it.
I felt a little bit like the mare in that moved me jaws when they first told us about it, and I kept on saying, is it really that bad? I don't want to take any chances. It is, nobody's ever died from this, but you get skin rashes, and you can get infections, and so just, please, just stay out of it for a week. Just let this thing die off, and let's move on. Thank you. Trustee White?
This happens often in the fall, because the water temperature in Huron River, and this is not only Belleville Lake, it goes upstream to all the lakes that are up through there, as Supervisor said, to Fenton. And the water is probably at peak temperature now, but when we start having cool nights, reed snow, no, when the water cools down, and we have a couple of real good rainfalls to flush the system through, then it should be okay. And let's hope that it's sooner instead of later, because it has to flush all the water through, and the water temperature has to go down to a cooler temperature, so that the, the weeds die off, that hold the P E A S. So it shouldn't take long. It's just, just the water has to turn over, basically.
Actually, you only get two unless the board votes for a third. Okay? Does the vote, vote, want to go for a third round?
Yes.
I don't hear enough support. I'm sorry.
I didn't think I had to.
Yeah, we already went through, we already went two rounds. Is it short?
I didn't have to.
Yes, you did. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Well, I just want to mention that our taxpayers' dollars are being well-used with the Detroit Regional Airtropolis under Robert Luce, that they are going to bring in David Egan, who's an expert on global industrial research, and e-commerce, and technology trends that are affecting industrial real estate. Van Buren Township does have industrial real estate, and I think being on the cutting edge of knowing how technology is changing, and how e-commerce is changing the whole way we do business in our economy, would be a good thing. It's going to be at Wayne County Community College on September 27th, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And I think our, our money is well-spent with Airtropolis.
Great. All right, hearing no further discussion, can I call for adjournment?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion, I've got support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are in adjournment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.